It's now recording.
Okay, we're gonna probably move in the Minnesota social services order. Sorry for the delay. Um, the first item of business on our agenda is the approval of the June meeting summary. Do I have a motion for approval?
So move.
And Commissioner, if you give me your name first, please.
Commissioner Harris.
Right, Commissioner Harris, thank you. Second. Do I have a second? Motion?
Second, Mrs. Phil Orr. Phil Orr, second, the motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Orr, appreciate that. I first like to move that the items on the meeting agenda constitute essential business of this board. Meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the population, considering the COVID-19 outbreak. People conflicting with the social security order, many electronic meetings be suspended. I request a motion for approval.
Phil Orr, so move.
Second, Harris.
All right. All right, that's been, uh, motion approved. The next item on our agenda is the finance report. And that will be given by long time.
Do we need to do a roll call just to make sure we can hear everyone clearly to respond?
Let me call the roll, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Peacock?
I'm here.
Commissioner Orr?
Present.
Commissioner Tompkins? Commissioner McSorley?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. That goes to the forum, thank you. And now the finance report.
Yes, uh, so, uh, for the month of July is the first month in the fiscal year 21. And according to the the 2020, the current FY21 general fund budget is $6,893,100. And the estimated monthly budget is $574,425. Um, on the expenditure side, the overall budget, um, it appears to be aligned with the projected expenditure, um, budget. Although, in this report that I, uh, we have prepared for you, if you look at the, um, July actual for the general fund, the actual, uh, the expenditure appear to be extremely under the estimated budget for, for the month. And that is because, um, the, uh, general ledger is still open and not all expenditure has been posted at this point in time. Um, coming over to the special public fund, um, you can see the first fund is the COVID-19 pandemic fund. That fund right now appears to be over budget and that is because the fund is relatively new and it was established due to the pandemic and all the expenditure in that fund is related to the, uh, COVID-19, um, expenditure. And the majority of that expenditure is relating to the, uh, the, uh, the shelters, uh, uh, at the fairgrounds and some other, um, personal protective equipment, um, expenditure for the, uh, staff and the, uh, uh, social services department as a whole. Coming down to the homelessness grant fund, um, that fund, we currently do not have a budget established for that fund yet because, um, social services finance, um, team is still working on the estimated to determine the carry forward, um, budget for FY21. And for that reason, you will see an over, um, an overspending in two programs such as TDDP and the youth homeless. And that is, again, because we do not have a budget established at this point. Once we, uh, uploaded the, uh, the budget for FY21, the expenditure will again be aligned with the, um, the budget for the fiscal year. And, um, uh, coming down to the total expenditure for that fund, you will see, we actually have a negative, uh, expenditure and that is because we do have a year-end adjustment from the, um, HMIS, uh, development support. And that, um, adjustment, the negative adjustment is greater than the total, the net total from the other two program within that fund. And that's why you will see that negative number there. But again, that is just the accounting adjustment, um, nothing to worry about for that number. Um, it will be, as we coming into the fiscal year, everything will starting to flat out and you will start to see the normal number. Um, on, uh, the last special public fund is the, um, social services grant for the nutrition program. Currently, the budget in the ledger is for seven, 709,600. And the current July expenditure is, um, um, only about 17,000 again. And that is because not all expenditure is posted into the ledger at this point. And now we go over to the revenue side. Most of the revenue, um, generated for the special public fund are directly supporting the program in the, in the special public fund. And, um, you will see the fund 30137, uh, for the special donation. That is, the majority of that, uh, revenue is coming from donation from the individual, from organizations, contribute toward, uh, the House Board, um, to support the House Nashville initiative. And, um, um, similar situation on the ledger is for the July actual, you will see that the actual revenue collection is exceeding the budgeted because right now we do not have the FY21 revenue budget established for that fund. Um, coming down to the, uh, social services grant fund, um, 32237 for the nutrition, um, you will see the budgeted revenue is the exact same budget, um, compared to the expenditure side. And the, um, July, um, revenue actual, um, appear to be lower than the, they did the budgeted amount. And that is because of the, um, not all the revenue collection has been posted to the ledger at this point in time. And what you see for that 7,000 is the reimbursement from the option program and some, um, miscellaneous, um, insured transaction and the other, the, the other GNRC contribution as well as the metro contribution toward the programs have not been posted to the ledger. And that explains the variance for that revenue. Um, that will conclude my financial report for July and I'm open to any questions or any concerns.
Thank you. Uh, any questions? I'd like a motion for approval. Financial report. Do I have a motion?
This is Commissioner Peacock. And I'll second Commissioner Peacock.
Yeah, again, second.
Commissioner Peacock.
And the next item on the agenda, thank you very much for that information. Good job, thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Loon. Loon is our new chief financial officer here in the department. I think at the last board meeting, we heard from Yuri Hancock, who's the director of administration. And we're very fortunate now to have our own CSO, Loon, here in our office. She came from, um, Metro Finance. She was our budget analyst and we, um, kind of matched her up, to lack of a better term. So we are very pleased with, with her work and we are excited about her being here. So thank you, Loon.
Thank you very much. Well, next item on the agenda, this is the director of the board.
Good afternoon. Uh, let me again apologize for our technical difficulties, but I appreciate you all hanging in there with us. Uh, let me begin by introducing our newest board member, Commissioner Michael McSorley. Mr. McSorley is the executive director of Family and Children's Services. And this is his first meeting, so welcome, Commissioner McSorley. We're glad you're with us.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'd like to, um, also announce that, um, this is a little late on in the agenda, we'll have more updates as it relates to the board. Um, we now have a draft for the winter shelter. Yes, Metro Social Services will be providing the winter shelter again this winter for the overflow shelter for the homeless. We have a draft of a report that we submitted to the mayor's office along with the vice mayor. Um, so they have that draft and we're waiting just for that approval. When we receive that approval, we'll go ahead and submit it to you all at our next board meeting in October. And currently, we start the shelter last year, we started early November. So, oh, I don't know what the weather is predicted for October, November, but that is generally when we start. So you'll have that information prior to November at our next October board meeting. Our COVID shelters are doing well. We have, we are staffing the two COVID shelters for the homeless. One at the fairgrounds and the other one at the municipal auditorium. We have 31 women at the municipal auditorium, it is women only. We've not had any positive COVID outbreaks there at that shelter today. Um, and we are also staffing the fairgrounds COVID shelter where we house the men and our positive COVID patients and all social people that are awaiting test results. So we are very pleased with the way those shelters are running. The governor's office has come through and toured the shelter with the Salvation Army a few weeks ago. Uh, we also have FEMA, the CDC, Health and Human Services, and also, um, got the FEMA, CDC, the CDC has toured the shelter. And they really have given a con mark for our shelter at the fairgrounds so much to the fact that they have said they could use that as a model, um, around the country. Also, it was cited in Washington DC, when FEMA gave their report, they gave Nashville a shout out for the tremendous work we're doing here around COVID shelter for the homeless. So, very proud of that and thankful to staff. They've been, um, monitoring and working at the shelter now since March. So we, uh, and then we opened up the second shelter at the municipal. So, yes, they're doing a fantastic job and I just wanted to say thank you to all of them for all their hard work. Uh, last year, last, last year, last week, we received a letter of notification from Piccadilly, who's our nutrition vendor for our nutrition program. They gave us a 30-day notice that they will no longer be our vendor and that they are closing. So we now have less than almost two to three weeks to come up as an emergency vendor for our nutrition program. And also, we want to ensure that no meals are interrupted and people are still going to receive their meals. So we do have a plan for that. Um, we've gone ahead and ordered meals that will carry us through this gap. And we have also received information from Metro procurement that we can do an emergency contract with the vendor here in town for the next six months to provide the service until we put out a formal request for proposal. So we're in the process of working on that. Um, we have assured the mayor's office along with any other constituents who have concerns about the meals, that the meals will not be interrupted and we will continue to deliver those meals along with the COVID meals. So as soon as we have a vendor in place that will help us over the next six months, then we'll let you all know that. And then we'll also be working on our request for a proposal for a permanent vendor for the nutrition program. Do you have any questions about that?
Um, this is Michael McSorley. Would there be any opportunity for other meal programs run by nonprofits to apply for that?
Um, it just depends, Commissioner McSorley. Um, we cover all the Davis County, we go from county line to county line. So that's, we're the largest meals on wheels program here in the city. So it's all about capacity. If they are able to prepare a hot meal, we serve hot meals along with frozen and shelf-stable meals. So it really depends on their capacity and yes, anyone that would like to be on the contract will have that opportunity when the request for a proposal goes out.
Okay, thanks so much.
Oh, nice. It's Commissioner Peacock. I'm just curious, how many, um, meals per day do you all provide? The hot and the, uh, chef, chef life prepared?
What we do is we provide a hot meal, that's five days a week. We also provide a hot meal in our congregant meal sites, but they've been shut down due to COVID. So now we're only providing home-delivered meals currently. Um, we serve five days a week, the hot meals. We also have a five-pack frozen that we deliver to every other day. And then we also have a shelf-stable meal that we deliver contingent on, um, if they're getting a hot meal or not. So it varies. We don't deliver to the same person every day. It's on what type of meal they're receiving.
But, I, I, I guess the question was, how many hot meals a day are delivered?
I, I would have to pull that exact information. We have a report coming just a little bit later on the agenda, but we can go ahead and get that information for you right now. You just give me just a second, I'll move on through the agenda and then we'll come back to that on the hot meals. Any other questions? Okay, and Commissioner McSorley, here today, we generally deliver, um, 300 meals per month, five days a week. And that's a, that's daily meals. I don't have the breakdown total for the hot meals, but we can get that information for you. You also should have that information on your monthly program outcomes report that we sent out to you in the packet as well. But we'll get that total number for you. Any other questions? And we don't, we don't have the complete monthly report broken down, but we do have, if you look under your report, under monthly program outcomes, under the nutrition program, it gives you a total breakdown of our congregant meals, our family meals here today. We have a 50 to 59 meal program and then our homebound meals.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on, um, Metro Social Services Board of Commissioners are required to attend training on, um, sexual harassment and also diversity. This training is presented by Metro HR and they have given us a date for the training for the board of October 22nd. At 1:30, they generally set that training up. We really don't have much control over that date. When we look at that date, that's just a week and a day prior to our board meeting. So my recommendation is that training takes approximately 45 minutes. If we can follow up with our board meeting after the training, I think that might be more convenient for everyone. But we just have to take a poll to see if everyone is available on the 22nd at 1:30 in October. So Bonnie will be reaching out to you, yes, you can check your calendars for that. If we agree, then what we'll do is we'll have the board training first at 1:30 and then follow up with our board meeting for October. If you all recall, you not needed November and December or January. Our next board meeting will last into February after the October meeting. And Bonnie will send something out to you at a particular date. We schedule that if everyone is available. Any questions about the training? Earlier this week, you received an attachment, um, by email of Know Your Community. It is our fourth annual edition of the Know Your Community Report. If you all recall, this report gives us a total demographic and information on our 35 council districts here in the county. And it gives us 27 data points on those particular council districts. We've already had, we sent this information to the mayor's office along with the vice mayor and also the council. We've already had several council members, um, respond to us and really appreciate this information specifically about their council district and what's happening in their current community. So they really use this data to apply for grants. They also do planning and public policy around some of this data. And we use this data as we plan for our budget for the next year and where the need is in the community here in the city. So, thanks so much to strategic planning and research for their hard work in getting this information out. And hopefully, you've all had a chance just to look through it and to see how many data points are provided and all the great information that we have on the city. Any questions about that? And when I move on, if, um, chair would allow me to go ahead and make my presentation on the nomination committee?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. The nomination committee met, um, last week. They are charged with The nomination committee is responsible for presenting nominations for the board of commissioners and recommending names for the positions of executive directors. The nomination personnel committee is also responsible for they're also responsible for, um, performing my annual performance evaluation as well. The members met and we currently have two vacancies and we're putting together nomination packets for those vacancies and we will be making a recommendation to the board in October. At that board meeting. So you'll be receiving this information and then you all will either agree or disagree on recommending
I don't think so, but it's going fine. Uh, since y'all taking it over, uh,
Could you please, could you please put your phone on mute if you're talking?
How much is that? Okay, all right. But if I decide to do that, you can do it in some other time, right?
There is, yes, we not.
Okay. So I'm sorry if you all
Okay, I'll let you know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, David, the nomination committee will be making recommendations to this board in October to fill out these current vacancies that we'll have. And this information will go for you once you all vet. The nomination committee will take this information to the mayor's office and make those recommendations to the mayor's office in writing. The mayor does have a final decision and he is the one that appoints our commissioners to the board. But we again would have, have the nomination committee put a roster together for you to review at the October meeting. And we'll send that out to you at the end of the conference. Any questions about the nominating personnel committee? Our next on the agenda is nutrition and I've already given my reports on nutrition regarding our current vendor. So once we receive a request to go ahead and move with a temporary vendor that will help us over the next six months, we will send that information out to you. But please make sure those, there will be no interruptions in service. And that completes my report, thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the homeless impact division.
Thank you so much and, and hello, everybody. And I just wanted to confirm that you all can hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, good. So I'm gonna, um, focus on the emergency solution grants. Um, that is an allocation of federal, um, grant that, um, the community of Nashville receives every year. Um, these federal dollars are usually going through MDHA, the Metropolitan Development and Housing Agency to manage. And then they are putting out a release for application, um, to nonprofits who then apply for these grants. The regular, um, emergency solution grants allocation, I'm gonna refer to it as ESG at times, um, for, for Nashville this year was $450,000. However, through COVID, um, the federal government has made more homeless, um, dollars and grant funding available to cities around the country. And, uh, a lot of that, they're doing that through these ESG grants. So Nashville has received a one-time allocation of $10 million. Um, there has been, it, it's one allocation really, uh, COVID-related. Um, the expenses that can be paid for the nonprofits can apply for, uh, programs that do emergency self-shelters, street outreach, uh, some prevention, rapid rehousing. We have also, in Nashville, received, um, technical assistance from, uh, the Housing and Urban Development Department. And our consultant has been working with, with us, with, um, when I say us, that she, we put a leadership team together with MDHA, the mayor's office, Metro Social Services, a representative from the homelessness planning council, and a representative with lived experience. And there are weekly calls to see where we are and, and strategizing with the community how to spend a large portion of these, um, $10 million. Um, a first round for about one point, just under 1.5 million dollars. It, it has already been released for application, applications, about 20 applications were submitted. The announcements have not been made of who's receiving those. And then the rest, uh, just under 8.5 million will be released in a, for application. I, I've heard by the end of this week, so probably on Friday. Um, especially on that last portion, um, we have worked diligently as this leadership team to focus and work with the community on focusing on housing. The suggestion is really to get a lot of rapid rehousing out there to, um, with the goal to house 400 or to, with the goal to house four hundred or more people. And when we look at that, we're focusing on people in encampments and in shelters that meet the literal definition. So that's, do you have any questions on that particular grant? Otherwise, a move. The other thing I wanted to give a brief update on is the Downtown Permanent Supportive Housing Project. Mayor Cooper announced last fall that he would move forward with plans that had been underway within Metro to create a downtown permanent supportive housing facility at five oh five Second Avenue North. It's, it's right across from the, it's on Second Avenue, right across from the fire station and the jail in that corner. It's a very small lot. So at present, there is a building planned with nine stories that would house about eighty to eighty-two people experiencing homelessness. It is in the designing stage, in the final designing stage. Bells Associate has been selected to build it. MDHA, the Metropolitan Development and Housing Agency, will manage it. And then Metro is right now working on support services. And what, what kind of, who is the population that we ideally would wanna house there? And the start of the groundbreaking should be in early twenty twenty-one with a completion date in late twenty twenty-two. Any questions on that? And we can give further updates. We at Metro Social Services, Homeless Impact Division, are in conversations, especially around the support services dollars, because once they're available, there's a possibility that these grants will be funneled through the Social Services Department and granted out. Or we, it's, it's, discussions are ongoing on that, but that's where, where our role will be. And then last, I wanna talk about the encampment situations. So especially during COVID, homelessness has become more visible than ever. Large encampments have grown, and people also in the downtown area are more visible. One of the reasons, or the main reason, is that nonprofits through COVID had to change their service delivery models. So for example, Room in the End is still serving up to two hundred people or sometimes more a day. But they're not having their day center open for people to sit inside and wait around. So it's still allowing, I think at this point, it's about twenty to twenty-five people, groups of twenty to twenty-five into the building at once. And that affects where people are. Then also, other providers, and that's pretty much any nonprofit, that usually had seen people in their halls or hanging out there. They just, they can't do that right now due to COVID. So what we are experiencing is that people are then in the streets and visible or in encampments. And then also the other, and this is anecdotal, my observation, talking to a lot of stakeholders. So COVID has caused, for the first time, food insecurity in, in the homeless population. And what happened also when, when services are not available as usual or when congregations were not able to immediately serve as usual, people were going to the core, were in larger encampments, where providers were still doing outreach and bringing food, and where it was easier to get the main, just to survive. And so this has created situations that are not ideal, to say the least, for neighborhoods. I wanna stress one where neighbors have been really affected and residents are affected just as much as the people living in the encampments, which is the Jefferson Street Bridge Encampment. There are a lot of complaints. We have done a lot of service focus there. Where we also have observed, and I just really thought of, what have we done? There is as much, we've done a lot of coordination with service providers to see how they can focus, how they can make sure that people are, that we're still working towards removing barriers of housing. But all of that has slowed down, and it really, I feel it's picking back up. And especially, the hope is that we're gonna see a huge difference with these Emergency Solution Grants funding coming in and with the housing focus on that. But it's really, it's very visible. And if you hear any complaints, please include or refer people to me. I'm happy to talk to residents. And there's not a quick solution right now, and we're doing the best we can with all the providers and coordinating what we can. And moving back to housing, some of the things that we also have to understand, what, what was difficult, for example, is ID replacements. The state has also changed how that's accessible. Birth certificate replacements, and all of these items are needed for people to get into housing. So I feel things are picking back up, but it's not quick enough. And then there was even access to medication wasn't as available as before. So mental health issues have increased, behavioral issues have come about. But I really have to, and wanna do a shout out to metro departments, public works, metro water services, police department, parks. All of us have pulled together to do the best we can and to work with service providers to do the best we can. And that's, that concludes my report at this point.
Next item on our agenda is the program reports. That will be given by Mr. Lonnie Way.
Is Ryan from the county?
It's your boy, Bonnie. That's why we wanna hear your beautiful voice.
Well, hello, board. And first off, I just wanna say awesome to see that everyone, and hear that everyone is doing well. That's always good, especially during these times. From my understanding, you had a little bit of a late start, so I might keep mine a little bit brief. But feel free, if you have any questions, I'm definitely open for them. So one of the major things that I at least wanted to share, we are actually kind of up on our phone calls. Our process for our walk-in is, has still remained the same since the last vote, which is we're not necessarily taking walk-ins. Everything is by scheduled appointment only. However, customers are still being seen. With that, although we don't necessarily have our walk-in, we are averaging roughly about between twenty to twenty-five phone calls a day. And that number definitely could be a little bit misleading, but if you consider the nature of some of the phone calls, which are a little bit more heavier during this time, because we're now still having to address some of the mental, emotional crisis that people have fallen into in, due to, you know, the pandemic. People are still calling, you know, having some of the backlog of their, you know, emotions and personal effects that have been, you know, taken away or moved or damaged or affected due to the tornado. So all of those things, we're still getting phone calls that are, you know, having the social workers at least, you know, be on the call for at least twenty-plus minutes to address certain needs. And then that may be the initial calls, but those calls are still having to be followed up, calls as well. So that is a number that we're kind of experiencing, at least with our phone calls, although the walk-ins are not there, twenty to twenty-five. And then one of the other things that I wanted to mention is also, we are still, you know, at the Metro Social Development Shelter. I'm not sure how much of this information was shared, but we're actually implementing groups there. So one of the things that we started to do at the municipal where the women are is on groups. Those groups are being run on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The social workers are doing those groups, and we've got good feedback. This has been a process that has been going on for roughly about two weeks right now. And we've gotten good feedback from the groups, from the women, and, you know, they like them. Just a little bit of a context, we had noticed that it was a little bit more difficult for the women at the municipal to kind of get motivated. A lot of them just didn't necessarily have employment or, you know, places where they wanted to go coming in the day. So a lot of times, you know, they would notice or see them just kind of, you know, lying around. But, you know, we know, and we cannot just set our social workers down. So we just said, you know, while we have the attention of these ladies, we definitely wanna make certain that we try to maximize the opportunity that we have to, you know, make impact on their lives. So those groups are gonna range from employment skills, resume building, self-care, cognitive behavioral therapy. I mean, it's a ranging group. In addition to that, we saw that the women were very open to the group. So now we're actually gonna implement that over at the fairgrounds, which is where the men are. And I'm in the process of speaking with some of the staff that are over there to kind of get a feel for, you know, what kind of groups would be effective for the men. I know that, you know, the dynamics of, you know, each one of those groups and shelters are a little bit different. So you don't wanna kind of cater the same thing and make a cookie cutter, cookie cutter approach to those groups. But just to give you an idea of some of the things that we're gonna do, I've kind of put on the plate, you know, motivational interviewing, cognitive behavioral therapy. I believe, you know, that's a point that anyone can kind of grasp, as well as, you know, job interviewing skills. Not necessarily just resume building, but also in the area of, you know, how do I maintain my job? Problem-solving skills, conflict resolution skills. A big one that I believe in is time management. And if I can just push a little bit on the time management piece, we're not necessarily talking about time management just from the standpoint of, I gotta make sure that I'm on time, and how do I set a schedule and do things like that? But the approach that we're looking at for time management is, while I'm on this earth, how do I maximize the time that I'm given? I think it's somewhere between eighty-six thousand, so many seconds that you will have per day. And the concept is really just looking at, okay, how do I take advantage of, you know, every second that I have? How do I make sure that every second that I have, one for me, or that, you know, it's not going to waste? So those are just some of the concepts and ideas of some of the groups that we're gonna have at the fairgrounds for the men. With that being said, if you have any questions for me at all, I am open.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I would note that Lonnie Way gave this entire report without any notes. So that tells me something about where his mind is. That's very good. Appreciate all of the, all the good work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next item on the agenda is Strategic Planning Research. And I believe Mr. Eric Parker is gonna give us that insight.
Thank you, members of the commission. It's just a pleasure to share with you for just a few minutes some of the work that we've been carrying out, some of it in the ordinary course of business. We've heard about the Know Your Community document. One of the features of that includes mapping, geographic information systems put into use to demonstrate the spatial display of characteristics of Nashville, Davidson County. We've also had an opportunity, an unusual one this year, with the tornado in early March. The mayor's office convened a group of nonprofit organizations operating under the umbrella of SOA, the volunteer organization active in disaster. And that group has been meeting in a, in a virtual way, weekly and then bi-weekly since March. And we've been a participant in that since its inception and also been called on to provide resources in the way of research and mapping. And we'll look forward to sharing with you here in just a moment, it should be appearing on the screen, the mapping display of the tornado activities. That, in a pretty compelling way, the map, which is a dynamic map, illustrates the path that the tornado took through Davidson County in a, in a straight line, more or less, through the center of the county. And based on the SEMA windshield drive activities in March, there was determination made around the amount of damage to properties, either for structures that were totally destroyed, received major damage or minor damage, and then also property other than the structures that may have been impacted. And that work, of course, has been going on through the, through the weeks and the months. Some of the damage was very minor and was easily handled in a short order. Others continue with a variety of needs up to the present and ongoing. UMCOR, the United Methodist Relief Organization, has been a part of that and is doing case management with households that have ongoing needs. And I believe there are about a hundred of those households that are part of that case management process. In early July, there was an important milestone whereby households needed to complete whatever applications they were making at that juncture for insurance, other resources through SEMA. And as part of that consolidated work of the many organizations that were canvassing of neighborhoods in, in late June to actually reach out to all of those households at their, their place of residence to share with them information, to provide answers to questions that they might have so that everyone could be responsive to the timeline needs for getting the resources they need. And appearing on the screen is that dynamic map, which is labeled Nashville tornado damage. You see pretty dramatically in that the path that the tornado took. And I'll just take a moment here and zoom in a bit. One of the areas that we were able to assist with, just a moment, was the area immediately across the river in, in East Nashville. So then zooming in, it, it shows in pretty detailed fashion what at each parcel was the, the damage that occurred. So we were pleased to be able to have this, this opportunity to work here with the Harry Medical College and their GIS staff along with our, our work here at Metro Social Services, to be able to, to share this with them. And this allowed for the development then of that canvassing plan for this area as well as for in Donaldson Hermitage and in immediate East Nashville. There's another planned canvassing that is to occur in mid-September. This was a very successful effort in terms of how the research was able to inform the canvassing. So as a part of that, the September event is going to go in the field actually with apps on phones so that those persons who are doing the canvassing can in real time update this information. I'll click on just one of those. You see there, for instance, a parcel has its address. And those persons that then do the canvassing in the next round will be able to take photographs, provide information, and update that in real time into this, this data system. So it's a real success where out of, out of tragedy and devastation, there's, there's an opportunity to use, use resources in a, in a good way to, to help resolve those for people. And just, just a demonstration of how mapping and spatial display can, can be very useful there. So thank you for a chance to share this if anyone has any questions.
Yes, I have one. Why is it we did not go into the North Nashville area at all?
There were separate canvassing activities, and there, there was, they were simultaneous across each of the areas that were affected in June and then also in September. So they did occur in, in all of the areas, north, immediate east, across the river Shelby Park area, and then Donaldson Hermitage. So they occurred in each of the neighborhoods.
I've been working in this thing since it hit. It's just Commissioner Harry. This is Commissioner Harris. And I have not even run across anyone other than when it first hit, some of us met at Big Chapel. And no one, and it seemed like we just stowed that area of the city completely away and jumped across the river and working in East Nashville, Hermitage, and Donaldson, and just forgotten all about North Nashville, which was hit very, very hard. And it's, it's confusing to me and I don't understand it. And I'm trying my best to do all I can because my church is in that area also. And we do what we can do, but it just seems like those who have the chance to do things just have forgotten and went over to help the Greater East Nashville and, and Hermitage and Donaldson. And that makes the people in North Nashville feel like we are unappreciative, although we are taxpayers. And it's, it seems like it's, you know, it's been that way for a while. And I'm just wondering, you gave your report, I'm grateful for the report, I'm grateful for the work you have done, but I'm still disappointed with how we are treating our friends, neighbors, and loved ones in North Nashville.
Certainly there was. There was a, a great deal of damage in immediate North Nashville and we'll be glad to convey that back to the organizing group around this as well. There, there have been some organizations that have participated in, in the VOA process. Gideon's Army, I think has been one of the fairly regular participants.
I know the Gideon's Army, but they don't speak for North Nashville. See, that's the problem. We pick out one or two organizations and you said Gideon's Army, and I'm not down to anyone. They're doing a great work in, in a certain area, but we're talking about the organization that you have formed or they have formed from, the mayor's office or wherever it's formed from, have not shown any interest in North Nashville. And they've had devastating, I know several people who've lost everything, had to tear down all the way to the ground and couldn't hardly get permits and stuff of that nature to start rebuilding. And it's sad. It's sad. And I just wanted to say that and you're not the only one I've said that to either. So I am concerned and I'll keep tooting my horn until we can get some things done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat Harris, for this comment. And I understand the seriousness and I also want to thank you. You mentioned early on that you've been involved in the tornado hit. And again, I want to thank you for your help and, and the help of any of the Metro Social Services staff during that very dramatic period of time. But the damage goes on.
Exactly. And I don't want, I don't want nobody to think I'm upset, well, I am upset, but I don't want you to think I'm just fussing to be fussing, but it's a serious matter. And, you know, we all, we all pay taxes and that's the part that troubled me. They take our funds, they give us no, nothing for is trying to get something done. It's always Germantown, East Nashville, Hermitage, Donaldson, and et cetera. And, and it's very disturbing. I, I, I tell anyone. And like I said, I, wherever I have opportunity to speak out for those in that area, I will speak out. And if I've disappointed somebody in saying what I feel, I'm sorry, but this is the way I feel. They, they have phones away over here.
I appreciate those comments. I really do.
Thank you, sir.
The next item on our agenda is new business.
I spoke earlier about the October meeting. So again, Bonnie will send you out that correspondence and the dates and time and how to log in. Hopefully we won't have technical issues that day and we can conduct our training and our board meetings on that particular day. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Bradley to make an announcement.
Well, as part of this new business, I wanted to announce that I will be resigning from Metro Social Services Commission effective September first, two thousand twenty. And to that end, I would like to read my letter of resignation to Mayor Cooper for the commission members. Dear Mayor Cooper, please be advised that I will be resigning from Metro Social Services Commission effective September first, two thousand twenty. It has been a pleasure and an honor to have served on the commission for the past three years and working with the dedicated employees of the Department of Social Services has been appreciated. The department employees continue to provide exceptional service and have been instrumental in helping metro government during this past year of significant challenges. Their attention to their responsibilities has been unwavering. They deserve the recognition and gratitude of the clients they serve as well as all the citizens of Davidson County. Kind regards, Michael Bradley. In addition, I wanted to personally thank the commission members for their time and efforts, service to the commission, and the service to the community. Also, a special thank you to Director Pratt and Vice President Brink and all the Metro Social Services staff for their excellent work and support of the commission. Thank you so much and wish everyone all the best. And that's, that's the whole reason.
Well, let me just say, Commissioner Bradley will, will definitely be missed. Commissioner Bradley not only knew us as a commissioner that served on the MSAs board, he's been a longtime friend to Metro Social Services. He is a former Metro employee himself. At one point, he was part of an organization that was under Social Services. So he knows the good work we do and knows us well. So he will be greatly missed and we just want you to know, we appreciate all your time, all your consideration, and all your effort that you've made as related to Metro Social Services. He will be greatly missed and we appreciate you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Bradley. I'm telling you like I told a preacher one time, suppose they don't take your resignation.
You know, I've been preaching to him for a long time.
I do understand, my brother. All right, safe travels, man.
Thank you so much. And now I need a motion for adjournment. The meeting is concluded. Do I have a motion?
This is Commissioner Peacock.
I'm sorry, just one more comment before we adjourn. We have had a call with Commissioner Peacock, who was vice chair. She has agreed to move into the chair position. So thank you, Commissioner Peacock. We really appreciate that. And also Commissioner Orr has agreed to be vice chair. So thank you, Commissioner Orr, for agreeing to serve as vice chair. We really appreciate your hard work and we appreciate your hard work, Commissioner Peacock. So thank you so much for agreeing to serve.
You are welcome. Commissioner Bradley, we will be missed.
Amen.
Amen.
Just one additional comment about that. I know the commission is in good hands. I know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done and a lot of people need to be talked to. So we'll be doing some of that too. But let me have that motion for adjournment again, please.
This is Commissioner Peacock. I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, and a second.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment? All right, we stand adjourned then. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too. Thank you.